Good evening. I'd like to call to order the San Carlos City Council meeting for September 26, 2016. Please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you and good evening. Do we have any changes to the order of the agenda?
No changes tonight.
Any changes from my colleagues? If not, we'll move on to Item 4, Report from Closed Session. Mr. Rubens?
There is no report from closed session tonight.
Thank you, sir. Item 5, Council Communications and Announcements. We will start with Mark.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Have those documents queued up and may I borrow the clicker?
You may.
Okay. Just a couple of things tonight. You'd think I'd know how to work this after all this time. You press the button?
On the left side to turn on.
Oh, the left side to turn on. Thank you. Yes, I should have realized the pilot light wasn't on. First off, I just want to make a couple of recognitions for some people in San Carlos who came to my attention in the last couple of weeks. First off, kudos to a young man who kept his wits about him when he was confronted in a rather disturbing circumstance by an older gentleman driving a car who kept trying to ask him to get in the car to give him a ride. And the young man kept his wits about him and eventually, after declining several times, said, "If you keep bothering me, I'm going to call the police," which caused the guy to drive off. So, I'm sorry he had to experience that. Those kind of things can happen anywhere, but I'm really glad that he kept his wits about him and knew exactly what to do. I also want to thank a member of our community who wrote me because he was concerned about the fact that his college graduate daughter got pulled over by a sheriff's deputy one night while she was out driving because he thought she might have been in violation of her curfew rules. And rather than just get angry, which a lot of people do, this gentleman said, "You know, I'd really like you guys to look into this and see if there are something you can do to avoid this kind of thing happening in the future." So, I've started a dialogue with Greg Rubens, our city attorney, and with Chief Rothaus about possibly bringing back some tweaks to our curfew law to deal with this kind of thing. So, kudos to both those people. Oops, sorry. Hit the click too fast. A number of people have probably heard about Ruby, who is a now-famous tree in the White Oaks area of San Carlos. I believe on the corner of Eaton and Ruby, actually. And I met with a woman who owns the house that the tree is adjacent to, and she's trying to save it because it was currently or previously earmarked for destruction and removal in order to preserve and repair some sidewalk stuff around there. And I'm pleased to report that after talking to Jay Walter about it, and he actually had already decided this, we're doing some more work to see whether or not the tree can be saved and the sidewalk issue be dealt with in a different way. So, kudos to people for trying to preserve the tree, and hopefully we'll be able to pull that together. Last thing I want to touch on just briefly is a topic I've been thinking about for a while. Not a lot of people know this because people remember San Carlos going through some very difficult financial times not too long ago, but we currently have something on the order of about $25 million in deployable reserves, reserves the council can assign to whatever it is that we think needs to be done in the bank. And that raises some interesting questions to me. First off, if you look at the pattern of how those reserves got generated, you can see that actually back prior to all the outsourcing of the police and fire functions that we went through back in 2008, 2009, 2010, the reserves were relatively low, but they've accelerated quite a bit since then because of the benefits of the restructuring and the recovering economy. Also note that throughout the period of the Great Recession, there never was a time when the reserves actually went down. So, things had to be done to restructure stuff, absolutely, but there never was a time when they actually went down. What concerns me, and I'll go through these slides a little bit quickly, is the current reserve levels we have, even if we got absolutely no revenue of any kind coming into the city currently, we'd be able to pay our bills and do everything the way we currently do it for about 10 months, which is a long time when you think about the fact that that's no money coming in at all and no changes to try and deal with an unusual situation. If we relaxed that a little bit and said, "Well, let's assume that there's no commercial activity, no sales tax, no nothing like that in San Carlos, but people continue to pay their property taxes," then it turns out we have almost a year and a half worth of time to decide to do something. And finally, if you look at what I think is the most realistic case of all, which is where the sales level in town that generates sales taxes is at the lowest level it's been in the last decade, which was during the Great Recession, you see that we have in excess of two years worth of time to figure out what to do. Now, there's nothing wrong with having reserves, but I think we need to have a dialogue with the community, and not just among the council members up on the dais, but I think we have to have a dialogue with the community about what are we doing with amassing all this money? What's the point of it and what are we trying to do? Because, you know, worst comes to worst, we could try and find some way to give it back to people. And, you know, that's a little bit of an unusual notion, but certainly one that we ought to think about. Thank you.
Okay. Thanks, Mark. Ron?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a few things. Attended the Art and Wine Fair Preview Party a couple of weeks ago, and that's coming up, I believe it's the 8th and the 9th of October. It'll be on the first three blocks of Laurel Street. It's our, sort of our signature event in town. I encourage everybody to go. I'm also part of the San Mateo County Jobs and Housing Task Force, and we had had about 10 meetings starting last September. We finished up last June, but we had one more meeting last month to sort of put in place some action plans, and we are making some significant progress. It's been well noted here and in other places that we have a huge housing shortage. We've created somewhere between 54,000 and 55,000 jobs in San Mateo County over the last eight years. We've only created about 2,100 housing units. Redwood City's in the process of creating about 2,500, so that would more than double it, but that would probably leave us about 25,000 to 30,000 housing units short in the county. And that's very important because everybody who, anybody who drives in this town or drives up and down the peninsula realizes very quickly how congested our traffic is. And one of the statistics that kind of jumped out at me doing the research was that there are 213,000 cars that come into San Mateo County every day from outside of the county. Those are people who live outside the county. They can't, not only can they not afford to live here, they can't even find a place to live here. So, it's important that we, as a county, attack this housing problem collectively. I encourage everybody to go to a new website that the county's created. It's called HomeForAllSMC, for San Mateo County, dot com, and it describes the housing problem, the jobs issues, and the commute issues. And it is sort of a roadmap and a toolkit there on how we're going to get to creating more housing. Secondly, I attended a high-speed, a combination, combined high-speed rail, local policymakers' group, which is a nice name, fancy name for the Caltrain Electrification Task Force. That task force is made up of representatives of every city between San Francisco and San Jose, every city, I should say, that touches the railroad. So, there's no representative from Pacifica or Daly City or Half Moon Bay or Portola Valley, for example. The largest discussion at that meeting was over grade separations. This task force has been really created, was created about four years ago, to keep us informed so we could, I could inform my colleagues in the city about the progress toward, that Caltrain is making toward electrifying the system. And I think I reported a couple of weeks ago that first trains will roll out in about four years from now, maybe, maybe five. But one of the things that's sort of been lost in the discussion is the, is the need for grade separations. We're very lucky in San Carlos that we've already grade separated everything that we can, and so has Belmont because we did those two projects together 20 years ago. But there's 42 grade separations in the, between San Francisco and San Jose that are really at grade crossings. And when you consider the fact that once high-speed rail and the electrification is fully operation, operational, there will be 10 trains per hour in each direction. So, it's basically a train going across a grade crossing every three minutes. That isn't a prescription, a gridlock without a grade separation. I don't know what is. So, there was a long discussion about that where we're going to ask the MTC to do a study to see how we can coordinate all these grade crossings and go out for the necessary funding. It's a lot of money, but it is quite necessary to making sure that we have adequate public transportation for the next 50 years. And then finally, I worked at the Sunday Farmer's Market yesterday. It was 90-something degrees, but some wise person decided that they would put the council booth or the city booth facing north so the sun was behind us, and it was, it wasn't as bad as it really could be. Met a lot of nice people, gave out a lot of information, and I'm not sure yesterday was one of the better-attended farmers markets, but I think that had a lot to do with the heat. Anyway, it was, it was still well-attended, and I always enjoy working on those. So, that's all I have.
All right. Thank you, Ron. Matt?
So, I wanted to just raise a couple of issues that I hope, if we don't put it on the council agenda for, you know, this type of format, that we could get it on the retreat that we have coming up. And one of them is, in the downtown area where I live, I've noticed a number of vehicles that are left on the street, almost as though our streets are the place for folks to store their old cars. And this is becoming an issue, especially on one of the streets near where I live, that it didn't used to be an issue because parking didn't used to be an issue as much. But if you go anywhere in the downtown area and start getting into the residential, where residential is abutting some of the, what we consider the business district, you'll find these days that the streets are impacted with cars parked in the evening. People come home, they want to park their car. And you would think on the more northern part of the town, maybe that wouldn't be an issue, but it is. And so, some of these vehicles are becoming an issue, that there's so many of them in the neighborhoods that are parked on the street, and nothing's done about it. I've also seen issues with cars that have expired tags, and some of these are in the area where the patrol goes by for parking enforcement, and yet these, these vehicles, you can see that the parking enforcement goes by and nothing's done about the, the tags. And then lastly, similar to the first one about older cars being parked on our streets, and we, I was reviewing this with Bob before the meeting because I know we had dealt with this before, and that is the issue of recreational vehicles, you know, boats on trailers or motorhomes parked on the street, and again, where people are taking advantage of the, I think it's a 72-hour rule, even from the time you reported. It's very difficult to get these vehicles off the street because people play games by moving them around and so forth, and then the reporting clock starts again. And so, I think that's something that would be worthwhile looking at either, like I said, on the dais if there's two people that want to do it right away, or we can wait until we have the retreat, whatever's the pleasure of the mayor.
Well, it's the pleasure of the dais. I'm happy to talk about it at the retreat. You know, we did just last year update our ordinance for boats and trailers, and, I mean, I think, I think it's, you know, we, would be an interesting topic to talk about at the retreat and see if there's anything additional to do.
That would be sufficient from my perspective. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Matt. Bob?
Couple of things. Folks, I think, saw in the newspaper that there was a fire at our transfer station down at, on Shoreway, and we had our meeting the other day of the SBWMA, which is a consortium of 11 cities in the county, which has a contract with Recology for our garbage pickup and our recycling and so on. And I just want to report that the committee was given a report by Recology, by our executive director, and by South Bay Recycling about the fire. No one was injured, fortunately. All the systems worked the way they were supposed to. There was some equipment damage. The building is apparently in good shape, some equipment damage, and we want to, it'll take four to six months to get that going. But at the meeting the other day, it was our executive director complimented all the folks at Recology and South Bay Recycling for above and beyond duty that evening into the, into the early morning to make sure that everything was in good order. And so, I just want to add my thanks also to Recology and South Bay Recycling and all the folks that came down and did their, did more than their job for that evening. Also, that, at that meeting, we discussed the beginnings of a committee that has been formed with a couple of city managers and some staff members that are going to be in discussion for a possible extension of the contract for our, with Recology. It expires in three years, but you have to start pretty soon to start going after it. So, in 2017, that'll be something that we're talking about a lot, and assuming that an agreement can be reached, it'll probably be coming back to us sometime, each, each city, for approval sometime in 2017. And that's all I have.
Through the chair?
Yes, Mark.
And, Mr. Rubens, if I, if, I shouldn't be asking Bob this question, please wave me away, but I just was curious. Do we know to what extent the repairs at the facility are covered by insurance?
We have, they don't have the exact numbers yet. We have two, our insurance broker is handling all of that. We have, I think, five or six different entities that are looking into all the costs and whatever. The final numbers haven't been discovered, nor have the final, I don't think the fire department has decided what the, how exactly they feel it started and so on, but we have, I think upwards of $30, $30 or $40 million worth of insurance, which is far in excess of what we're going to need for any of the equipment. Fortunately, it was just the equipment, and so it was explained to us that we have far in excess insurance coverage for, for all that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Bob. I got to cut a lot of ribbons over the last couple of weeks, and I thought I'd share some pictures. So, we have an exciting new project in San Carlos, a San Carlos commuter shuttle, which is jointly funded by the San Mateo County Transportation Authority, as well as a number of eastside businesses, including Sutter Health, which is the parent of PAMF, Natera, and Novartis. And we had representatives from all those groups, including additionally Commute.org and a number of people out there. So, this shuttle's going to pick up, I think, I think it's about five times, time to the Caltrain, when, when Caltrain arrives at the San Carlos Station and take folks to their employers on the east side. It's a big win. You know, we've been trying to attack the traffic bottlenecks in town, both on the construction side by looking at ways to either reconfigure the street on Alameda between Carlmont and Tirolinda, or by getting people out of their cars with public transportation, like Line 61. We're trying to do the same thing over on the Holly 101 interchange. We've got a big project planned with improving the interchange, but we're also trying to encourage fewer people to drive to work, and so part of that is connecting them in that last mile from public transportation to their doorstep. So, big kudos to Kristen Flores, who did a lot of the heavy lifting on this to get this done, and it's a very pretty shuttle, so. I also had the great privilege to kick off the San Carlos Citizens Academy. So, this is a class that regular residents in San Carlos can take where they learn about city government. They get presentations on all the different departments. It was oversubscribed, and on the night that I was there, which was the first class, we got, they got a presentation from the city manager and from the city attorney. I know their second class has been with Ms. Mendenhall to talk about the, the city budget. I just was really impressed. Everyone was very engaged. I've gotten, anecdotally, a lot of compliments from people from the presentations. They said it was very eye-opening. I was speaking to a woman last night about Rebecca's presentation on the budget. She said it was excellent, so I think this is going to be a great addition and really help engage a lot of our citizens in the civic life of San Carlos. I also had an opportunity to spend some time at the farmer's market. I brought along with me our state senator, Jerry Hill. We spent a couple hours talking to residents. Was also very, very hot, as you can see. We nearly melted. I'm going to do it again, and we're going to have Assembly Member Kevin Mullen join us on October 23rd from 11:00 to 1:00. And then I wasn't kidding about the ribbon cutting, so I got to cut the ribbon on, helped cut the ribbon for Expedia Cruise Ship Centers, which is a new business on Laurel Street, on the 800 block of Laurel Street. They offer cruise ships leaving from San Francisco, from Pacific Northwest, all over, so great, great little business. And then I got to cut the ribbon yesterday on the Rebecca Ana Day Spa, which is also on Laurel Street at Howard. They had a really nice event. They shut down Howard Street, had catering and live music, and all the neighboring businesses were out to wish them well, so that was a really fun event as well. And then lastly, yesterday, I had an opportunity to stop by the San Carlos Garden Club. I was entered in the raffle, and I ended up walking away with this nice selection of succulents. For those who you don't know, the garden club has been in operation since 1937. Their clubhouse is the Casa de Flores on Walnut Street. They do a lot to build community, to get people involved in gardening, and to help beautify our city. So, if you're a gardener, you want to learn how to be a gardener, I encourage you to check out their website and to get involved. And that is all I have. So, we will move on to Item 5B, Staff Comments on City Administrative Business. You'll note that our city manager is out this evening, but we are ably assisted tonight by our assistant city manager, Tara Peterson. Do you have any comments for us this evening?
The only comment I have is just a reminder that on Sunday, we are having the Home Protection Fair. It'll be adjacent to the farmer's market from 10 until 2:00, so come on out and bring your families. We'll have Public Works, Fire, and Police Department, and all the goodies and apparatus that comes with that. So, that would be it.
Great. Thank you. Okay. We will move on to Item 6, Presentations. So, I have the great privilege tonight to recognize and proclaim October 1st, 2016 as Bay Day in the city of San Carlos. So, I'm very pleased that an organization called Save the Bay has been out organizing all the cities in the, in the Bay Area to create the first annual, what will likely be a recurring event of Bay Day, recognizing the Bay. I grew up about less than half a mile from the Bay, and I always knew where I was in town because the Bay was always on my right or on my left. I grew up sailing on the Bay with my father, and I think we all recognize that, you know, the Bay is a jewel, really, of our planet, and, you know, one of the, I guess, the largest natural occurring harbor in the world, but it really defines our region. We had a legacy, you know, of a relatively polluted bay, and we've been doing a lot over the many years to improve it. You know, the porpoises have come back, the water clarity is improving, but we all have a long way to go in, in making sure that the Bay is clean and clear and safe, and we all have our own part to play. So, I know we have a representative from Save the Bay up here. If you, if you wouldn't mind coming on up, I'm going to read part of this proclamation, and then I'll come, come around and give it to you. So, this is declaring October 1st, 2016 as Bay Day in the city of San Carlos, and it reads in part, "Whereas the people of the Bay Area should celebrate San Francisco Bay together as a region on at least one Bay Day each year to inspire appreciation, conversation, education, and action for the Bay in order to highlight the work of Save the Bay and other environmental organizations and individuals to improve the health of the San Francisco Bay over the past 50 years. Now, therefore, I, Cameron Johnson, Mayor of San Carlos, on behalf of the entire city council, do hereby proclaim May, excuse me, proclaim October 1st, 2016 as the first Saturday of October in future years, and the first Saturday of October in future years to be Bay Day in the city of San Carlos." So, I'm going to come around and give this to you, and if you, if you wouldn't mind introducing yourself, and I know there are many activities being planned all around the Bay Area, and maybe you could speak to a few of those. So, thank you.
First and foremost, I'd like to thank the city of San Carlos for adopting and officially declaring Bay Day. San Francisco Bay is a precious natural resource that all of us should cherish and have the ability to celebrate it. Like the mayor said, there are tons of events around the Bay Area on Bay Day. Some of the ones that are close to here include a few at Bear Island, where will be, there will be kayaking events where you can get out on the bay and paddle. There will be a wetland restoration event that will be held by Save the Bay, so the community members can actually volunteer to help restore the bay. And there will be a bunch of other activities like arts and crafts, and just really Bay-themed programs throughout the area. So, that includes places around Bear Island. I will be at the Facebook Farmer's Market in Menlo Park, and it's just going to be a great time for the community to come together and celebrate the Bay. For more information about Bay Day, you can always go to bayday.org and find an event near you there.
All right. So, here's your proclamation. Thank you very much. Thanks for your work on behalf of the Bay.
Through the chair? Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mark.
Yeah, I just wanted to say, I'm very glad that we're doing this as well, and just a little personal note, when I first moved to the Bay Area back in the late 90s, I had heard the term "Save the Bay" from quite a number of people, and it wasn't for a number of years before I realized that the original organization of Saving the Bay was literally to save the Bay because they were planning on filling it in and building all sorts of developments on it. And thank goodness, that never came to pass from your predecessors. Good work, and I'm glad to see it continuing in a different form today.
Well said. Okay. Now is the time for public comment for items not on the agenda. This evening, I have three speaker cards. Our first speaker tonight is Serena Lowe. Come on up. And John Rethans. Rethans, you're going to share your speaking time? Is that, okay. Good evening.
Thank you very much for letting us speak here. My name is Serena Lowe. I am a San Carlos resident. I have two children, a first grader at Charter, San Carlos Charter Learning Center, and a two-year-old at, in preschool. This is my, one of my partners here, John Rethans. He's also a concerned parent in San Carlos. We are here to speak about our concern with regards to the shortage of preschools in San Carlos. We both have children in the preschool age group, and for any parent who's lived here long enough, who have children in preschool, you may know that it's a challenging process. It can be very stressful. There's not really that many. There's a lot of wait lists that are involved. Some of them are one year long, two years long, just to get into your preschool of choice. We realize that the San Carlos Smart E program has opened up, and we've heard fantastic reviews about it, which is, they have an after-school program, but they've also just recently put preschools on every elementary school campus as well. The concern is, is that there's been a survey that was conducted. It's a childcare supply and demand summary prepared by the County of San Mateo, Childcare Partnership Council, First 5, and Human Resources Agency, where they demonstrated and surveyed and had objective data to show that in San Carlos alone, there's about a 500 preschool spot deficit for children who could be attending preschools in San Carlos. And so, those parents, those families have to find other means for those 500-plus children, for preschool age specifically. And then, of course, if you counterpoint that to the development, that's, you know, been approved in San Carlos, which will...
Oop. Pardon me. This thing usually doesn't beep, so.
That's impressive.
It does its job.
Yeah. Sorry about that.
Sorry. Do I have more time?
Well, if you could just wrap up your thought, that would be great.
Sure. So, again, with the development, the, the issue would be even more significant, you know, with the units that are coming in, more families will be coming in to enjoy our great city. And so, there is a petition that my partners have put together. It's if you go on any search engine and look for San Carlos preschool shortage, you'll find that, and it has the points of what we're looking to, to, our goal. Mainly, we're looking to see if we can collaborate and find a solution to this. We realize it's a very challenging, challenging issue, and we just want to be at the table. We also ask to be put on the agenda for a future meeting, if that makes sense. I realize that there's a lot of conversations outside of these, you know, these walls, so we do appreciate your time and attention to this issue.
Thank you. I appreciate the comments, and we did discuss this actually at our previous meeting, and we did agree to put it on a future agenda. There's a report that's being finalized by the county, and once that report's available, we're going to have a report and a discussion at the city council.
Yes, yes. We've been notified.
Okay.
I'm happy to hear that. Thank you.
All right. Great. Thank you for your comments. All right. Our next speaker tonight is John McMorro.
Thank you. John McMorro with Silverstone Communities. I just want to, well, as you probably already know, the escrow is closed at Wheeler Plaza.
Thank you, John McMorro with Silverstone Communities. I just want to, well, as you probably already know, the escrow is closed at Wheeler Plaza, so that is a huge milestone. It sets the stage for the next phase, which is the construction part. And I just, it's been a long way getting there. I really wanted to thank the council, both present and past, for all their support. I wanted to thank Jeff Maltby. So many times, this project was just dead, and he really worked hard to keep it going, worked behind the scenes to keep it on track. At the end, we had so many legal documents, I want to thank Greg Rubens and his legal staff. They turned the documents around quickly, efficiently, and very professionally. And then lastly, I really wanted to thank Al Savay and Lisa Costa-Sanders. They've been working on this project from the get-go. They've been diligent, working on behalf of the city to make sure that we end up with a great project for the City of San Carlos. They've been excellent to work with, and the city is truly lucky to have people of their caliber on staff. That's it.
Thank you very much, John. Congratulations. All right, our next speaker is Sarah Kareshi. Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you all for letting me have a few minutes to speak. I'm Sarah. I'm an associate at the Silicon Valley Leadership Group, and as many of you may know, we're a trade organization that represents about 400 businesses in the Silicon Valley region. But we also have a foundation arm that puts on a turkey trot every year, and as part of that, we host what we call Mayor's Cup, which is a competition among mayors, city council members, and city managers to see who we can get the most competition from. So I wanted to personally invite San Carlos to participate in that. You would be competing in the small-city category and would be trying to upset reigning champion Saratoga this year. So it's a great event. All the money goes to local charities here in the region, the Second Harvest Food Bank, Healthier Kids Foundation, Housing Trust, and Health Trust. I will follow up with a special registration link, and we'll leave some flyers with more information. So thank you.
All right, excellent. Thank you very much. Sounds like fun. Okay, I have no other speaker cards. Is there anyone else wishing to speak on public comment for items not on the agenda? All right, seeing none, we'll move on to item 8, approval of the consent calendar. Consent items are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion on these items unless members of the council, staff, or public request specific items to be removed for separate action. Is there anyone wishing to remove an item from the consent calendar? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion.
Move approval. Second.
I have a motion and a second. Crystal, please call the roll.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Grisilli?
Yes.
Councilmember Grokot?
Yes.
Councilmember Obert?
Yes.
And Mayor Johnson.
Yes. Okay, we'll move on to item 9. Item 9A, a report to council on the health effects of polychlorinated biphenols, also known as PCBs. Mr. Walter, good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of City Council, Jay Walter, Public Works Director. And tonight, we have some experts in the field that we had promised to bring in to be able to talk to you and have a conversation about the issue of PCBs. Tonight, they're led by Stephen Hill. He's the division chief for the Toxics Cleanup Division for the San Francisco Bay Regional Water Quality Control Board. He has brought some experts as well, Jan O'Hara and Nicole Fry, that he will introduce. And so I'll ask Stephen to come up and begin the presentation.
Good evening. Thank you, Jay. And Mr. Mayor and council members, I appreciate the opportunity to come before you. For a bit more background, Nicole Fry, in blue, is our risk assessor and toxicologist at the Water Board, and Jan O'Hara is an engineer in our Planning Division. And you'll be hearing more from them. I'm just doing a few introductory remarks before I pass it along. And I wanted to give you a little background about our agency and what it does. On the slide behind you, we have an org chart for Cal EPA. The San Francisco Bay Regional Water Quality Control Board, or the Water Board for short, is part of Cal EPA. We're one of nine regional boards. Our parent agency is the State Water Board, which is one of several Cal EPA departments, as you can see. We're responsible for protecting and restoring water quality in surface waters and groundwater in our region. As part of that effort, we require cleanup of unauthorized spills and releases, ranging from leaking underground fuel tanks at corner gas stations all the way up to federal superphone sites. We set cleanup levels that protect human health and water quality. I also wanted to just give you a quick summary of the presentation. As you will hear, PCB concentrations are elevated in storm drain sediments and soils at specific sites in San Carlos's industrial district. That's a concern for us because it contributes to high PCB levels in fish caught in San Francisco Bay, and our agency is taking actions to address that aspect. But these concentrations are generally not a concern for us with respect to direct human exposure to PCB-impacted soils. We and our sister agency, the Department of Toxic Substances Control, which is also shown up on the slide, are requiring cleanups at those sites where soils are found to exceed direct exposure limits. So with that, I'll hand off to Nicole and let other folks finish off.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Stephen, and good evening. So, human health risks. So just as an overview, I'm first just going to give you kind of a big picture, what is the main point, and then go through some, answer some questions, like how were PCBs used? How did they contaminate the environment? What are the potential health risks? And then, what's the highest risk? And then Jan is going to take over and give you a sense of what's being done to reduce that risk. So just as the big picture, thinking about how do we assess toxicity risk? And so first, you have to have, thinking about the toxicity of a chemical, and then you also have to have exposure to that chemical. And so when we are thinking about the toxicity, we want to know how toxic is the chemical? And then for exposure, we want to think about what pathway? Are you eating contaminated soil, touching it? Or are you drinking contaminated water? And then we also, how much exposure? So if the contamination is in soil that is below pavement, you'd have very little exposure, and then hence, little risk. And so the point here, exposure really does dictate how much risk, as well as how toxic the chemical is. And so then, to get more specific about PCBs, obviously, we're here because they are a toxic chemical. But then, we're mainly interested tonight in thinking about environmental contamination of PCBs in the environment. And so when we're thinking about contamination levels in soil, air, or water, they tend to be typically pretty low. At this point, they've been used in the past, and they've unfortunately spread across the world, but now, levels that most people come into contact with are relatively low, so the risks from that direct contact is relatively low. And as Stephen mentioned, the one pathway that we are worried about is people eating fish from the Bay, because it is found that the levels of fish, certain fish in the Bay, are high, and that is a real concern for people eating those fish. So then, to get into some of the details, how were polychlorinated biphenols used? And I say "were used" because they were manufactured from 1929 to 1979, at which point they were banned. PCBs are a very stable chemical, and so they were very useful, and for that point, used all over the world. And so here is kind of a diagram showing how they were used. So about 60% was used in transformer or capacitor oil, and so the picture is showing a transformer up on a electrical line. And so that was the main use. We also have 25% plasticizers, and so this is in paints and caux used in different buildings. And then we also have the hydraulic and lubricant oils and other miscellaneous. So this is kind of the sense that they were very useful because they were so stable, but now, they have gotten into the environment, and they're still there because they're so stable. And so now, let's think about how did they, how do they move around? How do they get into the environment? And so here is the diagram that I'm going to go through. So here, we're seeing the PCB, it gets released, and it's usually a liquid or a solid, and so it will get into the shallow soil at a site. And here, at the site of the release, you can have pretty high concentrations. And then, that shallow contamination can get up into the air. So PCBs are an oily, they're not very volatile, so we are not thinking about them getting too high levels of gaseous in the environment, but the dust can also occur. But typically, we think of relatively low levels at the site can get into the air. And then, thinking about them getting spread, they can travel in the wind, and typically, we think about, this is, as they move, they're going to disperse and become even lower concentrations. And so here, I'm showing the kind of the dust particles setting, settling out as they've blown downwind. And so then, the next step we think about is it rains. And definitely, in a city like San Carlos, with a lot of paved surfaces, we're going to get that runoff into the storm system. Here, I'm showing it as a creek, but also, storm system is where a lot of that runoff is going to occur. So you see it going into the storm system, and then eventually, going out to the Bay. And so that's when we start getting sediment contamination, and so sediment here is the soil beneath the water. And also, there is a little bit of water contamination. So PCBs are oily, they're not very soluble in water, but some of it will dissolve. But typically, these are relatively low concentrations. It's being dispersed and diluted. And so the next thing that we have to think about is the aquatic life in the Bay. And so the smallest fish who interact with the sediment the most are going to uptake those PCBs, and then the larger fish who eat the smaller fish will also get contaminated. And here, actually, we're seeing, we can get quite high levels. So the next question we want to think about is what are the health risks of getting exposed to PCBs? And so typically, we separate risks into cancer-based risks versus non-cancer-based risks. So here, I'm showing the non-cancer risks, so it can have an effect on your immune system, reproductive system, your development, so neurological development, as well as the thyroid hormones that regulate development. It can also cause damage to skin and eyes. And here, I just wanted to make the point that our bodies are very good at clearing out low levels of toxins. That's what they're designed to do. So for a lot of these effects, you can be exposed to PCBs at a small level, low level, and your body can clear it. It's only once it becomes above a level that your body cannot handle, and then we'll start to see these risks develop. So then PCBs are also, there is a potential cancer risk, and so they're classified as a reasonably anticipated to be a human carcinogen. And so what this means is that they've done a lot of animal studies, and so it is, it is well-known that it can cause cancer in animals. However, it's more limited of what we know in humans. But there is some evidence, and it has been, they think, linked to maybe liver and skin cancer. So the next question is, what exposures pose the highest risk to San Carlos residents? And so when we're thinking about exposures, we want to think about two different types of exposure. You can have acute or chronic. And so acute is when you get a very large dose in a very short period of time. And so typically, this happens, in order to get a high enough dose to get an acute risk, this would be someone working as a manufacturing or an industrial use area. And so that is not really what's happening nowadays. And so really, in this area, we're more worried about the chronic exposure, and so this is when you get a repeated low dose over a really long period of time. And so, since environmental contamination, as I said, is pretty low, that's, this chronic exposure is what we're worried about, and specifically, fish. So someone who is eating fish from the Bay over a long period of time, significant amounts of it, could have a real risk. And so this is what we're worried about in San Carlos. And the Greater Bay, right? Anyone eating fish from the Bay. So just to reiterate, what is the highest risks of exposure pathway for residents? And just going back through our conceptual model of where the contamination is, so we can think about, there are sites where PCBs have been released in San Carlos, and we've identified those, and those are what we're working on to clean up, as well as DTSC. And so those are typically away from residential areas, and so there, we're not having, we're not expecting the residents to be exposed to those areas, and we're actively cleaning them up. As well, thinking about air contamination, we do see that you, at the site, you will get some PCBs in the air, and some of it will get dispersed. However, the levels are so low in air, and then the levels that get dispersed ultimately get washed into the storm grain. And really, that's where we see them accumulating and getting into the sediment. And so, thinking about water contamination, it's not very soluble. The levels are low, not anything that we'd expect to be a risk to the human exposure. Same thing with the sediment. But it really is just people getting out there, fishing, and eating a significant amount of fish. That's where the risk is really going to occur. And so to help us think about what fish we should eat and how often, there is the PCB Fish Advisory. And so on the top, you can see it's for children and pregnant women. They're more susceptible, so they have slightly lower amounts of fish that they can eat, but two servings of salmon is fine, whereas nobody should be eating the surf perch. So this is a good resource for anyone doing kind of sports fishing in the Bay. I will say that commercial fishing doesn't happen. So the fish you're buying in the stores is not fished within the Bay. And so this is really if you're getting out there and doing any kind of sports fishing. And so now, I'm going to pass it off to Jan to talk about what's being done.
Thanks for all the introductions. I'm going to try to build on that. I've got about four slides. So how are the risks in San Carlos being reduced? And we can think of two ways, and we've talked, both of my colleagues have talked about cleanup sites. So I'm not going to talk about how we clean up sites. That's sort of, you know, another one of my colleagues who couldn't be here tonight does that. And so also, we know that DTSC is doing that, so if you need to hear about cleanup sites, we'll come back and talk about that. But then another way that the Water Board works on reducing the risks is through our TMDL, which is what I'm going to walk you through. So TMDL is a very unfortunate acronym. I just start off with that all the time because it's just such a mouthful and really, it's hard to say what it really means. Total Maximum Daily Load. That does mean something within the Clean Water Act. So it's a federal law which requires that we come up with a plan to improve water quality when there is a problem. And I tried to simplify the process of a Total Maximum Daily Load, or TMDL, here in this slide, because it starts out with a problem, and obviously, our problem here is that the fish are unsafe to eat, and that's, you know, not okay. Then we look for what are the sources of PCBs that are causing this problem? And here, we've found through a good bit of work, took a few years, that stormwater is the biggest supplier of PCBs to the Bay at this point. And then we say, okay, so what do we do about it? And we come up with a series of actions, and those we put into, that those, the actions, the problem, the sources, those are what is a TMDL. And a TMDL is implemented through permits. So you all are, I'm sure, very familiar with your municipal regional stormwater permit. I know you know and love it very much. And it has several actions in there for reducing PCBs in stormwater by three kilograms a year. So what does that mean? What is actually happening? Well, all of the cities across the Bay Area have been doing a number of things to work on PCBs, including San Carlos. They've done some pilot-scale projects. They're mostly done. Things like evaluating, they were kind of a learning, the first five years, the previous permit was a learning phase, where you looked at how to get PCBs in caux and how to manage that. Looked at how to retrofit sites to treat the stormwater. So a lot of pilots, sounds like you're familiar, it looks like you're familiar with them. And that included identifying properties that could have PCBs on them and sending that information to the Water Board. Mostly, that's done. And I can say for San Carlos and San Mateo County in general, the sites that were referred to us, that were identified as having PCBs, were sites that we already knew about. Also, another action that cities are taking is treating stormwater Also, another action that cities are taking is treating stormwater on-site, because Nicole showed very clearly that sometimes there's PCBs, they adhere to dirt, and the dirt gets washed around into our storm drains. And so treating that water by filtering it is something that we're doing more and more of, not only in the Bay Area, but around the world. Something that's coming up is to contain PCBs during demolition. So the study phase is over. Right now, all the permities are working on how to do it. And if it starts by July 1st, you get a two-kilogram credit out of the three kilograms that must be removed per year under the stormwater. But the clock is ticking. Note that that's got to start by July 1st, 2019. Another way is to improve city O and M, and that would be things like street sweeping. So there's the, again, the connection with the dirt coming off of some sites. So how are you guys different from anyone else in the bay? Well, you are a little bit different because, as you probably know, San Carlos was one of the five areas around the bay that had sort of a little bit higher PCB concentrations in your street dirt than other places. So that is both a challenge, challenge and an opportunity for you. Because if actions are taken to reduce those PCBs in that street dirt, then they, there's more credit towards that three kilograms per year. So specific actions you should take, well, first and foremost, obviously dust suppression, so we don't get the air problem or moving into the streets. And that would be for construction projects that the city is responsible for. All, all the construction sites are required to do dust suppression. And then when you, also, when you're doing public projects and you're removing dirt from streets or dredging, that kind of thing, it might be a good idea to talk to us at the Water Board or your stormwater coordinator through the county and, and just say, is this, is this a potential for PCB loads avoided? And should we be sampling for PCBs? And if so, do some good, good quality sampling, and then document the PCB levels and the soil quantity removed, so that you have no missed opportunities. All the cities across the bay, but particularly the five pilot areas, need to be sure they don't miss opportunities to remove PCBs. So I'm kind of mixing up our whole risk discussion with a little bit about permit compliance, as you can see. I hope that's okay.
[inaudible]
Now I'm back to the risk. Yes, that will reduce the risk, is right. Thank you. And then also, I just want to throw in, because we've talked about the main risk from PCBs is people eating the fish. And so it's good just to remind everyone that while everything is being cleaned up and while we're working on these plans and the TMDL, we also have an education program for people who fish a lot. And there's a variety of things being done. And all the Bay Area discharges are required to work on this. And that includes wastewater, the industries, refineries, and the stormwater permities. And there's a number of, of really cool projects that are hitting people who do fish and rely on the fish in the bay. And we can talk about that another time if people have those kinds of questions. So to recap, I just want to say PCB concentrations are a little bit elevated in storm drain sediments and soils at certain sites in San Carlos. It concerns us because it contributes to the high level of PCBs in the bay and then the high levels of PCBs in fish. They're not generally a concern for us with respect to direct human exposure. It's more the fish, the common theme here. And the Water Boards at DTSC are requiring cleanup. And obviously, there's actions that the city is taking as well. So with that, we're happy to answer your questions.
Thank you very much. Excellent presentation. Questions for our presenters? Mark?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Very good presentation. Thank you for being as thorough about that. One question to start with, and it, I guess, the way I ask it is, it seems like it's either all or almost all about the fish. That at the, put it another way, my, my sense from your presentation was that the, that there are sites that are known to have high, higher levels of PCB contamination in them. But what really is concerning you is that how that gets disrupted and flows down through the, the sedimentation process into the bay and ends up in the fish, which people then eat because the fish are concentrating it. Is that a reasonable summary of what you were telling us?
Yes, it is. Because in developing the TMDL, there were studies done about all of the various aspects of PCBs in the bay, and that is the problem.
Okay. And so in, in that sense, and I know I'm oversimplifying drastically, the, walking past a site that was contaminated at some point with PCBs isn't necessarily the risk factor. It's eating the fish that's been concentrating the PCBs from a whole bunch of different sites in the water. I made that as a statement, but I'm actually asking you this question.
That's true. Nicole's our expert. Do you want to add on that? Or do you want to?
Yeah, so the, the sites that have been identified, they are industrial sites. And so when I'm talking about exposure for residents, I'm assuming that these residents are not spending 24 hours a day on those industrial sites, really rolling around in the dirt. Because it's true that those, we are, we have remediation plans in process, and we're doing active cleanups, and we are getting them down. But they're not, all of them are not currently at a, a level where residents should be.
So you, you could, you could expose yourself to a high level of, of PCBs through engaging with enough contaminated dirt?
See, and you really have to think about the acute versus the chronic. So, you know, walking past, you know, just as a small exposure, it's, it's too short of an interaction. You really do, for these chronic, the exposures that we're thinking about, you have to have a significant daily exposure every day for 20-plus years in order to start to see a risk develop for cancer or the non-cancer effects.
Okay. That's, that's great. And that's good sort of preamble, this whole thing, to what I was getting to. The, the challenge that I think that you have as an organization, besides cleaning up the problem, is to the aver, I suspect, it's fair to say, to the average person, when they hear about information like this, and something that's believed to be a carcinogen causes cancer in animals, you, you, you have a lot of knowledge and experience and, and data behind you to make the statement that you just did about its repeated low-level exposures. There needs to be a way of demonstrating or proving that to the average person. Because the average person's thought is, hey, if I'm walking past this site every day, or it's, you know, half a mile away from my house, I'm exposed. Okay? And that's not quite the type of exposure you're, you're talking about in your presentation. And somehow, I mean, do you make efforts with community outreach to bridge that gap, to try and bring enough understanding to folks?
Well, I guess this is, this is one. This is, this is my first, I'm relatively new to the, to the Water Board. But I don't know, Stephen, you have any other?
Yeah, we, we do routinely public outreach at sites where there's a concern about people being exposed. The sites tend to be discreet, so people are concerned if they're near a particular site, but not about sites in general. So it tends to be rather patchy. So, you know, we might do, you know, two one month, and then nothing for six months, and then go over to a third site, just depending on, number one, what the risk is, and number two, how people are perceiving the risk. And it turns out, the perception of the risk is usually the more important in terms of which ones we need to focus on.
So it sounds like you are available for, if, if a neighborhood wants to have a discussion to contact you about that.
That's correct. And depending on which agency is overseeing the site, we might be looking towards DTSC, our sister agency, and say, well, hey, it's your site, your turn to go.
Okay. Thank you. I really appreciate it. And again, I appreciate the presentation. It's just, this, you hit the nail on the head, sir. The perception versus reality thing, that's the really hard part. Because you're talking about, we, we don't have the level of expertise that you do. Okay? And yet, we have to, you know, believe what you're telling us. And it's not that I don't believe you, it's just that that's the step that needs to take place.
Okay. Thank you, Mark.
The one question I had was, your presentation focused on human risk. And I wonder, particularly in San Carlos, with our number of creeks we have, and then you talked about the sediment, the risk to wildlife, and should that be something that we have to be concerned about?
I will say that definitely, from the fish standpoint, that we are, that, I mean, that that's more towards the bay.
To, to focus it.
I could add something from a stormwater point of view, is we do worry about the effects of stormwater on aquatic life, is whether they're PCBs or not. So the, all of the stormwater treatment requirements are aimed to slow it down and settle out both just the amounts of, amounts of dirts. When you pave an area, there is dirt coming onto the area, even though it's paved, it sounds a little anti-intuitive. But that all goes into the creeks, and it can cover up all the wildlife. So these stormwater treatments serve a number of purposes, and they will help aquatic life in their creeks.
And partly, what I'm focused on is, in, in the creeks that we have, and, you know, runoff, as you mentioned, getting, taking sediment in that would contain PCBs. You talked about fish, and of course, we do have fish that go up these creeks and spawn, despite the fact that they're in the conditions they are. But also, the fowl, the ducks, geese, you know, things that, that we have that feed on, on some of the fish and so forth. You know, the, the way I look at it is, yeah, we, I, while I appreciate the threat to human life, we put them there, and we have a, a responsibility to the wildlife that can't control these things, we do. And, you know, like I said, the, the bird population and so forth, if there's any risk there. And again, you know, our focus, my, my focus would be, is there anything that we should be doing as a council or as a city to help in the process if there's a risk involved there?
Something that comes to mind is that runoff is runoff, and it's going, you know, whether you're protecting the bay or the creek, stopping it in any, you know, the answer is the same. You know, not letting the sediment get to the creek.
And so there, what you were saying before, there are sites in San Carlos where we might be, you know, doubly concerned or, or do extra measures for preventing runoff getting into our creeks during construction. You know, already, I know, you know, with sites, there's requirements for doing the, the straw logs and things like that to prevent dust and so forth from getting into, into the stormwater. Is there anything that we ought to be doing additionally as a city, especially on the east side? Because we've, we know we've had PCBs used on the east side in the past.
I think all the management practices are well-known. But like anyone, at any time you do anything, you, you know, making sure the management practices are followed well. You know, whether it's your home or your city, it's, people can take shortcuts, you know. You hire somebody, and they don't know how serious you are about wanting the paint just right, or whatever it is, there, you know, you'll get a different level of workmanship. So I think that the management practices are there for controlling dust during construction time. And I think the main thing to be careful of is, in San Carlos, is that you do need, because of the elevation you're at, you need to dredge occasionally. And I think that would be a good idea to look at those soils and think about whether they should be sampled and documented and extra steps taken then. And we'll be happy to talk with you if you have questions about that.
Okay. Actually, I have a, after questions, I have a comment for the council on that.
Okay. Mark, you had an additional question?
Actually, it was an additional comment for us to discuss amongst ourselves.
Okay. Go for it.
All right. One thought that occurred to me as, as you were talking to Matt, is, do you, do you provide, like, an audit service? Do you come out and, you know, could we hire you to basically come in and review our policies and practices as they relate to dust control, sediment process oversight? And tell us whether, whether we're doing things optimally, or there are things, areas for improvement?
I think I'd want to talk with Matt Fabry about that before I answer you directly.
Fine. Yeah, that'd be fine. And then the other thought I had from my colleagues, and I'm, you know, I can't commit us to doing that. I'm just saying that if you have that available, I'd like to know about it, because then I'd like to make the pitch that we hire you to do that.
Certainly couldn't do that for 79 cities in the, under the permit, but we can, we can talk.
We won't tell them that you're doing it for us.
Yeah.
So. The other question I had really is just for staff. And Tara, if I'm the only one interested in this, you, staff could just get back to me individually. But I'd be interested in what our enforcement practices and resources are for enforcing rules about dust management, for example. I keep focusing on that for construction projects. Because as we all know, it's one thing to have rules, it's another thing, we have to apply the enforcement resources to them, or there's a statistical proportion of events where the rules don't get followed. So I'd like to know what, what level we're doing there. Thank you.
Okay. Thanks, Mark. Matt, you had an additional comment?
Yeah. I don't want to go into this too long, but two things. One, just to the point that Mark was making, just this last week, I was sitting on my back deck, eating lunch, and next door to me, the apartments are being worked on. And all of a sudden, a guy fired up a saw, and he was cutting away the stucco around the windows, and dust was flying everywhere. And as a cancer survivor, I just thought to myself, hmm, I wonder if there's any asbestos in that stucco from the building that was built in, you know, in the 1950s? And so I did, you know, and I notified our building department, and they, they sent a notice to the contractor, and he had another way of controlling, or he instituted a way to control the dust. But it just points out that this stuff is, you know, these kind of circumstances are rather difficult to control and where people can take shortcuts. I forget which one of you said that. They oftentimes do, and it's very unfortunate. But one other, one comment I will add is, I know in my business, you know, doing home design and producing plans and so forth, there are agencies, we're not one of them, but there are agencies that require a sheet that goes in with your set of documents that talk about bay, risk to the bay, and how to, how to minimize that. And it, you know, it's a full sheet, it'd be easy to get our hands on something like that, and then make it a requirement for home construction or any kind of construction that goes on in San Carlos, so that that would be part of the documents, just like we have to do green building or, you know, so forth. But I suppose, again, that's something we could talk about at the retreat, if you want to. I'll bring my copy of the sheet I have.
That sounds good. Okay. Any other questions? Well, we have one gentleman who wishes to speak under public comment on this item, Paul Maginetti. Paul, why don't you come on up? And thank you for sharing this article with us. We all have it in front of us, so.
Oh, great.
Good evening.
Great. Thanks for letting me speak, Councilman. I believe everything they say. It matches everything that I know about what we've seen. What concerns me are about the sites that are not identified. If you're a homeowner and you know that you have PCBs on your land, a lot of times, people are not likely to tell the Water Boards that. So that's a concern for me. And our community, built in 1948, is now surrounded by industrial areas, which in the past were used to create the microwave industry, which then morphed into Silicon Valley. They used a lot of PCBs. So we are chronically surrounded by dust that we breathe. And I've only been in this area for 10 years, but we have people in the area who've lived there all their lives. So it seems to me, this is a good way for somebody to get, to get a thesis, PhD, just testing our PCB levels and the levels of people who don't live in this neighborhood. So my question is, if you have PCBs in your body, at what level is it too much? Is, is there a, a level set? I'll leave that as a rhetorical question. There are properties that have high levels of PCBs. There are land use covenants on them, so they cannot be used for residential or other areas, and those are completely remediated. And my ob- And my observation has been on recent developments that have been approved, that they have exceeded what the general plan allows for. I think in negotiating those sorts of things, that the city should ask that the developer remediate more than what the water board is asking for. That needs to be part of the negotiation because that benefits not just our neighborhood, but the whole city and the bay as well.
Paul, you're out of time if.
That's all I had to say.
All right. Great. Thank you very much. Okay. Well, I want to thank our presenters very much. I thought it was an excellent presentation, very clear about a complicated subject. So thank you for taking the time and joining us this evening. And with that, we'll move on to item 9B, a report to council on the Climate Action Plan Annual Report. Ms. Peterson.
Really hated to leave that comfy chair. I cannot tell you. So before I begin the presentation, I just wanted to make an introduction. We have a new part-time sustainability coordinator. Her name is Elena Elmedo and she helped along with Kristen to put this presentation together for, for us tonight. So with that.
Welcome.
So just a little background as a reminder, the Climate Action Plan, or the CAP, was adopted by the city council in 2009. In it, the council set GHG or greenhouse gas emissions reduction goals of 15% below 2005 levels by 2020 and 35% by 2030. In the CAP, it also provided suggested implementation measures in the areas of energy, transportation, solid waste and water to reach these goals. Some of the actions that we've been taking over the last year include the council approving the, the part-time sustainability coordinator position. Thank you very much. We also received two Beacon Spotlight, Gold Spotlight Awards for activities that we have done. The ILG also came to San Carlos and created a video. Thank you, Cameron, for starring in the video.
I'm sorry. ILG?
ILG. Institute of Local Governments. They, they run the Beacon Award Program. Sorry about that. Threw out an acronym. I apologize. We also held an Earth Day event right around Earth Day this year and we're looking forward to future events. In the areas of energy, held a number of public energy workshops. We also participated in the California, what's called the Cool California Challenge and San Carlos residents committed to taking the challenge and doing more to conserve energy and the city was awarded $1,000, which we put towards the Earth Day event. We also, the council has approved three different property assessed clean energy or pace programs within San Carlos and a number of projects have been undertaken by residents using these kinds of funds to do sustainable projects on their property. We also, council approved the Peninsula Clean Energy and we're, that is going to be launching in October, October 1st and it's going to be rolled out over time and I'll tell you a little bit more about that at the end of my presentation. PG&E's Step Up and Power Down was launched in both Redwood City and San Carlos. It was a two-year program which is about to sunset. 351 households participated and there were a number of public campaigns, which are actually in excess of that 11. Also, the Public Works Department undertook a facilities energy conservation improvements project to do mechanical upgrades and lighting retrofits at city-owned facilities. Other programs that were undertaken were the San Mateo County Green Business Program, which was relaunched this last year and nine businesses so far in San Carlos have received recognition. The city has also accelerated the solar permitting process and received just today a Seoul Smart Gold Designation for our efforts at making going solar easier. This program is run out of the Department of Energy. Under transportation, the Holly Street US 101 Interchange and Pedestrian Overcrossing Project, while still in the design phase, is definitely a project that's going to help mobility for pedestrians and bicyclists getting across the freeway. Another small project was 11 new bike racks, which were installed on Laurel Street. We also installed electric vehicle charging stations in the Civic Center Garage. There are three down there. And also both the commuter shuttle and the Samtrans Bus Route 61 are doing a lot to reducing vehicle trips in San Carlos. A couple of things underwater and solid waste, the city replaced over 60,000 square feet of passive grass with landscape that does not require water. And the city joined with the Cal, took advantage of the Cal Water Rebate Program and received over 750 nozzles for irrigation, so they've been replacing our irrigation heads in the city. And we also continue to make positive efforts to reduce and divert solid waste. So this summer, our summer intern with the help of DN VGL, which is a consultant that works with the county, put together a municipal GHG emissions inventory for the year 2015, which shows that we've made very good progress in some areas, so-so in other areas, but good overall progress in reducing our GHG emissions for city facilities, buildings and things that we do here in the city. One of the things that really impacts our Climate Action Plan is Senate Bill 32, which was signed by the governor this month. It will reduce the amount or will increase the amount that we need to reduce our GHG emissions. In other words, just to remind you, our current goals are 15% below 2005 by 2020 and 35 by 2030. This new goal is 40% below 1990 levels. That's a significant amount and what we're doing is all local agencies are kind of looking at what that means for them. Next steps, staff will continue to seek out opportunities to implement cap measures in a fiscally sustainable manner. Current efforts will continue into the next year and be monitored for their effectiveness. Staff will work with our partners and regional agencies to determine how SB 32 is going to be implemented and how it's going to impact our cap. And staff will return to council to request fundings as initiatives or other things are needed. So with that, I wanted to say just a few words about Peninsula Clean Energy and I'll put on my glasses because it's small print. So there is an option for the city that has been presented that eight cities have taken advantage of and that is to increase the amount of renewable resources for our municipal operations. So right now, the cities, for the most part, have all taken on a 50% diver, excuse me, a 50% rate. What that means is 50% of the energy that PCE will provide the city will be from a renewable resource. We have the option of increasing that to 100% if we elect to do so. There are eight cities, Brisbane, Millbrae, Portola Valley, Redwood City, Woodside, Menlo Park, Foster City and Atherton that all had elected to go to the 100%. The information that I have to provide you to make that decision is how much that will cost. So for example, right now, the PG&E rates are established. If we go with the 50% renewable, our rates will be decreased by $13,000 a year, almost $14,000 a year. If we elect to go with 100% renewable, that amount will go up to by about 16,000. So the difference is about $30,000. We could discuss this if council decides that they would like to at a future item on an agenda at a future meeting. We do not have to make a decision now. We could make this decision at any time because we can opt up at any time. And with that, I'll take any questions.
Can I, I can add a little bit of commentary since I'm on the PCE board. So this is, this is a request that's coming from PCE. By default, all businesses, residencies, municipal agencies are, go into a 50% renewable product, which is actually 75% greenhouse gas-free because a lot of it is hydropower. And as Tara said, that's a reduction. We, we save money. It's, it's cheaper than what you get for PG&E. And then every, everybody has an option to opt up to a higher product, product that is 100% greenhouse gas-free, 100% renewable and that would be a net 16%, or $16,000 above what we're paying today. It's about a 5% increase in our electricity bills. So I think, I'll just, I'll just put in my commentary. I'd love to hear what other folks think. I think there's two real big reasons to do this. One is that it shows leadership, you know, we, we're showing that, hey, it's important for us to support renewable power and, and we're going to do it by making essentially all the power that is used to light every building or pay for any, or power anything in the city of San Carlos be 100% green power. And then the other reason to do it is that as we look for, you know, our Climate Action Plan, a lot of times we're talking about, hey, should we spend money to put solar panels on this building or should we spend money to get more efficient this or that? Those, those are good things to do, but there's a way with like a single stroke of a pen, you can basically go to 100% green power. And so that has, that has huge benefits. So I'd be interested to hear what, what folks think.
To the chair.
Yeah.
Shouldn't we be having this discussion when we have the item on the agenda? We're not going to be able to decide this tonight. This is, we're going to talk about it, then we're going to talk about it again.
Yeah, no, I'm, I.
I think, I think what the mayor's doing is trying to see if we should put it on the agenda.
That's exactly.
I'm all for putting it on the agenda.
Okay.
As, as am I.
Okay.
So there's three.
So let's put it on the agenda.
Correct.
I mean, again, I wasn't trying to cut you, cut you off.
No.
We're going to repeat this conversation.
Feel free to cut me off. Sorry for being so long-winded.
No, 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 no. What I meant was we're going to repeat this conversation.
Yeah, absolutely.
With this good staff report, we'll be able to decide what we want to do.
Okay. So we've got, we've got three, three votes to put on the agenda. Let's, let's do so. Are there other questions for Ms. Peterson?
I'm going to save. I'm going to save my question because it just got put on the agenda, so I'll save my questions.
Okay, great. Any additional questions? All right. Then we have one public comment on this item and I'd like to invite up Suzanne Emerson to speak. Good evening, Suzanne.
Good evening, Suzanne Emerson of San Carlos, speaking on behalf of San Carlos Green. I want to thank the city for making so much progress in implementing the Climate Action Plan this year. You know, it's been on the books for a long time and we've been making some kind of slow progress. I think adding that part-time sustainability coordinator helped to really push things forward. Also, I didn't see in the presentation, but I saw in the staff report, the comment about evaluating the rooftops of various city buildings to see if solar might go on some of them. I know that it's a little bit more difficult putting things out to bid and that there's cost for staff time involved in doing that, but it does have the advantage of, it's been several years since I saw the numbers on it, but back then it was cash flow positive from day one because there were zero interest loans that were available to buy the, buy the solar panels and then you're making money from, as soon as you get them. So I hope that that's sort of wrapped up into that same discussion of how much power do you need and how you're paying for it and whether you're sourcing it from a part, more part from your rooftops as well as from the Peninsula Clean Energy Program. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Suzanne.
All right. I have no other public speaker cards on this item and we will move on to new business. Item 10A, consideration of adopting a resolution approving the revised City of San Carlos Code of Conduct and Ethics Policy for elected and appointed officials. And do we have a staff presentation on this? Crystal, good evening.
Good evening. Crystal Moy, city clerk. For your consideration tonight is an update to, open to me. For your consideration tonight is an update to the Code of Conduct and Ethics Policy. Staff recently reviewed the policy and identified three areas that required updates. So the first area is to incorporate the city treasurer position. The current policy only addresses city council and appointed officials. So the policy has been updated throughout to include all elected and appointed officials, which includes the city treasurer. Next, we expanded section seven to include prohibiting unenforceable conditions when evaluating applicants for an appointed position. And then lastly, we added the language to section 12 regarding use of social media. This section provides a caveat for city officials to be mindful when posting personal opinions so as to not be perceived as sharing an official position of the city and/or the body on which they serve. And then there's, the section also cautions the use of social media as a conduit to communicate with other members and potentially violating the Brown Act. So that concludes my presentation. If I can answer any questions.
All right. Any questions for Crystal? Seeing none. Are, is there anyone wishing to speak on public comment on this item? Also no one? If not, I will take a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move to adopt Resolution 2016 dash.
Ninety-two.
Ninety-two, a resolution of the city council of the city of San Carlos approving the revised City of San Carlos Code of Conduct and Ethics Policy for elected and appointed officials.
Second.
I have a motion, a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. Crystal, please call the roll.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Griselli?
Yes.
Councilmember Grocott?
Yes.
Councilmember Obert?
Yes.
And Mayor Johnson.
Yes. All right. Thank you, Crystal. We'll move on to item 10B, consideration of approving a resolution setting a public hearing on November 28th, 2016 to consider 2017 residential and commercial solid waste collection service rates pursuant to Proposition 218. Good evening, Mr. Walter.
Mr. Mayor, members of city council, good evening. Jay Walter, Public Works Director. And tonight, we're here taking our first step to talk about 2017 solid waste rates. Seems like only yesterday we were here talking about 2016 solid waste rates, but as you know, it's an annual process and so we'll, we'll start out tonight so that we can have these rates effective by the time we come around to 2017. So just the, the discussion topics for tonight, we'll talk a little bit about the rate-setting process for members of the public that may not be aware of how this works. We'll talk about the 2017 rates and the revenue requirements for them and we'll talk about the 2017 recommended rate adjustments that we'll be asking you to send, direct staff to send out a Proposition 218 notice for. Then we'll talk a little bit about the residential, commercial rate alignment issues, which are what is primarily shaping the recommendations we have for you tonight. So a little bit about the solid waste rate process. Recology and South Bay Recycling, who are the two companies hired by SBWMA to collect and then dispose of our solid waste in the city of San Carlos, they submit rate applications for how much money they need the following year and they have to do that by the summer. And so the, this was completed in the summer of 2016. These were analyzed by SBWMA and agency staff, comments made, revisions made. And then the SBWMA Board, of which Councilman Griselli is the chair, approves, reviews and approves the revenue requirements and they did that at their September 22nd, 2016 meeting, so just last week. So essentially, we saw what the, the revenue requirement was going to be for San Carlos. We had a little bit of a heads-up going into that, but we got the final numbers at that, after that meeting. This talks about the total contractor's compensation and other pass-through costs, which are the disposal and franchise fees that San Carlos charges. Then the next step is that member agencies go through the process to set their annual rates. So this is the process that we'll be starting now and other agencies have a little bit different timeframe than us based on when their solid race, solid waste bills go out. So for 2017, the estimated San Carlos revenue requirement is a little over $8.2 million. That includes the contractor compensation and as I mentioned, the disposal costs and agency franchise fees. And the estimated collection revenue at the 2016 rates, that is if we made no change to the rates and we collected that revenue going forward, we would have an estimated collection amount of a little over $8.1 million. So this results in a slight deficit for 2017. And the, there's a small number of this 14,371 that'll factor into a subsequent calculation that I'll talk about, but essentially, if we looked at, if we left everything the same and we just simply went forward with the rates as is, we would have a slight deficit in what revenue we collected during 2017. And so again, looking at that a little bit more in detail, we have the 2017 collection revenue at the 2016 rates, shown as a little over $8.1 million. The recology services compensation at a little over $5 million. The SBR disposal and processing costs, that's at the transfer station in the recycling facility, a little over $2.1 million. The city costs and franchise fees at a little over $1 million. And so that estimated deficit, again, almost $120,000. So when I use that number going forward, I've corrected it to include the 14,371. So the number on the next page will be reflected. So the number on the next page will be reflected as 134,131, which is essentially what we consider to be the deficit for 2017. The estimated deficit, as I should say. And of course, it's never just as easy to think about it in only one year. As the council is aware, there are a number, there are typically three years in play whenever we talk about solid waste rates. We have our '27 rate year estimated, and in this case, estimated deficit, shown in red. We have from 2016, which has not yet finished, so it's still just an estimate, we're showing a surplus of about $131,000. We look back at 2015, and with the calculations that are provided to us by SBWMA staff, it's showing that as 2015 comes to a close before it's finally audited and made actual, there's still a surplus of about $101,000 from that particular rate here. And then in 2014, finally, which one now becomes actual, that is, it's finished, done, we had quite a significant surplus from 2014 rate year, which all told pushed together indicates that the city is looking at what amounts to be, in this three-year sort of horizon that we always look at, an estimated surplus of about $427,000. So what does that mean? That's essentially a 5.3% decrease if we were to adjust rates based on that number going forward. So that's pretty good news. We don't have a need to raise rates particularly high for substantial new revenues, and so from that standpoint, it's not something to say we have this money to do what we want with, but it is money that is sort of in that, we'll call it the reconciliation account as we look at those, each of those three different years. So one of the other issues that we face, and on the slide on the screen, it shows again the number for our total 2017 revenue collection amount. And when we break that down into the commercial revenue and the residential revenue, which is essentially San Carlos has a number of residential accounts and then our commercial and industrial and multifamily accounts on the other side. So we look at the revenues that are proposed to come in based on the same rates for 2016 moving forward, and we show that on the commercial side, we will be essentially over-collecting the revenue based on current rates by about 17%. And on the residential side, we'll be under-collecting revenue based on the comparison from revenue to cost by about 29%. And the reason that I bring this up is that over the last couple of years, we brought to the council's attention that there is apparently, and over time has developed an inequity between the cost of providing the service and the rates charged on both the residential and commercial side. We haven't been able to go back and trace that back to find out exactly how that happened step by step, but here we are today at this point in time, and we have a pretty significant difference. And one of the things that we need to think about is, well, what's important about that? Why should that make a difference to us at all? So as we look at the impact of Proposition 218, essentially, the city of San Carlos is permitted to recover all of its costs to provide refuse collection services of containers of various sizes so long as the revenue derived from the ratepayers for the service doesn't exceed the funds required to provide the service. So all being equal, we would provide, we would charge ratepayers exactly the same cost as it takes for us to provide the service under the contract. But for whatever reason, at this point in time, we've gotten kind of out of whack in that regard. So again, as we've identified before, the issue is not only the residential versus commercial rates, but to a degree, because the council has been aware, we have some slight inequities that relate to the residential carts. Then when, in years, we were trying to encourage recycling, we sort of incentivized the cost to go to a smaller cart. And so some of those costs are less than what it takes to provide the service, and on our larger carts, the cost, the rate is actually more than what it takes. So we have sort of a two-pronged approach. The problem, we've tried to deal with that the last couple of years on the residential side by reducing the cost, the rate for the biggest residential carts. And tonight, what we want to try to get the council to focus on moving forward for this particular year is trying to deal with the residential versus commercial inequity. So in the staff report and the documents that you have, we've come up with what we consider to be five options for the year, so for year 2017. So one option being the do-nothing approach. That is, we would be in a position based on the reconciliation numbers to go forward with rates the same as in 2016. We would have enough revenue to be able to pay Recology for the services that they provide. So that's option one. And then one of the things that has recently taken place, as Councilman Grisilli has mentioned, is South SBWMA has recently hired a new executive director. And as in my discussions with him, he is interested in exploring this commercial cost issue further, and so because he has been on board for only a short amount of time, we really haven't had the time to dive into that. So without a lot of detail to provide in an analysis, this option being one which, if we want to just wait, we could leave the rates the same, and it would not have a significant impact. Option two, three, and four are different transitions, a one-year, a two-year, and a three-year transition to help bring that, to change that cost-to-rate inequity on the residential and commercial side. And one of the things in attachment to, on page two and three, are tables that give you the annual amounts of what it would take to provide that one, two, or three-year transition time. And then with option five, after some discussions with the city manager and the city attorney, we've come up with an option that would give, begin a gradual transition towards this realignment by introducing a 2% decrease on the commercial side and a 2% increase on the residential side. So the options, at least as it relates there, the one that we're recommending for council to consider tonight as we move forward would be option five, and that's taking a 2% reduction on commercial and having a 2% increase on residential. So as it relates to that particular increase on the residential side, the chart on the screen has the cart sizes on the left side. It shows the 2016 rate per month that was charged, the proposed 2017 rate, the difference in both a monthly and an annual amount. And as the council can see based on that red square, the annual impact to residential rate pair with that particular cart size would range from between $5 and $16 per year. That's at a 2% increase. On the commercial side, if we look at a 2% decrease, again, we have a chart that shows the different cart sizes and bin sizes, and we have the 2016 rate per month and what we would propose in 2017. And again, the red square would highlight what would be the difference per month. We didn't do, I didn't do any more detail on difference per year because on the commercial side, generally speaking, you have multiple carts of the same size, several different-sized carts, you have multiple bins of the same size, a couple different-sized bins, and you also have a frequency that is different. One times a week, two times a week, three times a week, all depending upon the commercial account. So rather than going into a great deal about that, I just indicated that we would be looking at potentially between, say, $0.57 and $7.58 a month difference on these commercial accounts if, just representing them as having these particular cart or bin sizes. So that's the, that's kind of the impact. Again, it would be more because there are many of them that have multiple carts or bins that would go on in terms of the savings that's there. As it relates to unscheduled services, as the council is aware, these are special services such as backyard collection, transporting carts from side yards to curb, putting them back, or special pickups that are scheduled directly through Recology. And per the predetermined index in the franchise agreement, we're looking at these unscheduled services to be increased by 0.51% for 2017. Not a large amount, but yet based on our contractual agreement, we pass these along only to the customers who subscribe to them. This is not at all part of what the general rates are for residential customers. In this one sheet, it shows in the middle of the page, the San Carlos column for 2017 rate year. You also have this as part of your staff report package, but essentially, it sort of walks through from top to bottom the various calculations that are used to determine what the final amount is at the bottom, that 427,191 resulting in a 5.3% essentially surplus for rates for 2017. So the staff recommendation for tonight would be that the council would authorize us to issue the notice of public hearing for Prop 218, to hold that hearing on November 28, 2016, and increase solid waste rates in the amount of the 0.51% increase for unscheduled services, 2% increase for residential customers across the board, and a 2% decrease for commercial customers across the board. This would be what we would recommend goes in the Prop 218 hearing notice and would recommend that for council going forward. Next steps, tonight, we'll get direction from you. The Prop 218 notice we'll have ready to send out by the end of the week, and then we'll have our public hearing on November 28, which means our adopted rates can be effective on January 1, 2017, in time for our billing cycle, which is essentially starts in February. So at this point, I'll take questions.
Thank you, Jay. We'll start with Matt.
Hi, Jay. Trying to understand a couple of things here. The chart you gave us that shows the 2017 rate year estimated deficit, and you end up with $119,000 and some change. There you go. So that's without the 2% up and down?
That's correct.
And so if we do the 2% up and down, then where are we at? This 134?
Well, no, the difference would be, it would be entirely different calculation based on the, that $8,121,499. We would have a higher amount of collection revenue on the residential side and a slightly less amount of collection revenue.
Do we have those figures? Do we know what that would be? And what this number down here would be, this 119, would change to what?
That would actually, it would stay the same because we would be making an adjustment on the overall revenue requirement. So the deficit essentially would still be the same for 2017.
So to summarize what you just told me is if we raise the residential 2% and drop the commercial 2%, it's revenue neutral?
That's correct.
Plus or minus a few dollars, I suppose?
That's correct.
And so do we know what it would look like if, for instance, for sake of discussion, could you, if we wanted to discuss this tonight, could you give us some idea if we went down with the commercial rate at, say, 3% or 4% and didn't touch the residential rate?
I don't have that number. I did not do a scenario of that, so I wouldn't have that number for you tonight. Best we could do would be to bring that back to the very next council meeting and have a follow-up to this meeting.
However, we do, because of all these surpluses in previous years, we end up, even with this deficit, you were at 427, that we'd still be ahead of the game?
Well, we, when we look at that number, the 427, again, that is that number that sort of crosses all, over all those three rate years in terms of what surpluses or deficits were sort of pending or finalized for those rate years.
So how do we end up with this 130? How do we go from 119 to 134?
So the, there's a number that's part of the calculation, which is additional agency fees of $14,371. That's part of that, that large rate sheet that was shown in the, that was in back, that was in the color, the slide that I had later in the presentation. So I had to add that in in order to get this 134 amount, which is essentially where we get to with our '27 rate year estimated shortfall. So it.
I'm not following that still. Sorry.
Okay.
And you don't have a slide for that to show?
I tried to, I essentially tried to walk it this way, that when I take those two numbers, the 8241,259, and I subtract the 8, 121,499, you get 119,761.
So what are additional agency fees?
That's, we have a, the agency fee estimate is something which, as I mentioned in this...
We are the agency?
We're the agency. So we have, whoops, I'm sorry. We have a, there are city costs that are associated with our garbage collection and revenue that we need. So some of those things are, we pay for our street sweeping out of our trash rates. Okay? We also pay for some, some amount of staff time that is used to do these various things and interact with SBWMA and work on solid waste rates for the year and that kind of thing. We also have household hazardous waste fee that we pay so that that service can be provided for San Carlos residents. There's also a 10% franchise fee that's a mix, a part of that mix that has been included for other purposes within the city that I don't have all the detail of where that money goes. And we have one other fee, which is a 2% that we're using for litter reduction fee as part of our stormwater program. So those are the, essentially, those are the agency fees amounts that come out to the 1.088 million that's shown there.
And so what I, one of the things I would take from that, although you didn't cover it, is the city itself, we don't act as a business and pay out of our general fund for our garbage pickup at our parks or anywhere. How's that paid for?
That's a good question. I'll ask Rebecca if she knows. Honestly, I don't, I don't know that. Don't know where that money comes from.
The garbage fees for the parks, there's a park maintenance account that we use to manage our parks' maintenance. As far as the garbage collection fees, I'd have to go back through the detail. I don't have that right in front of me. We do have a budget for our parks' maintenance that includes all the maintenance of those parks, including recycling and pickup.
So.
I think we just increased this last year. Yeah. I need to go back and look. I don't have the exact line item details.
So you don't have the numbers, but it does come out of the general fund for the city to pay for its own garbage pickup at parks and other sites that we have, City Hall, et cetera?
We pay for the maintenance. I don't know exactly the line items in that. I'd have to go back and look.
I'd be interested to know. Because otherwise, what it looks like to me is we're putting on the other businesses and the residents of San Carlos to pay for garbage pickup at our parks and City Hall and other facilities, and we don't treat ourselves as a ratepayer. And that, to me, I don't know how the rest of the council feels, but that, to me, does not sound fair because we have a general fund to pay for those things, and if we're not paying for them out of the general fund and acting like a business and paying our own fair share, then that's, like I said, I don't think that sounds fair. But since you don't know, you don't know. But it'd be nice to have that information for this analysis.
We can go back and look at the line item details.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you, Matt. Mark?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Jay. Couple of questions, but before that, just a general comment, which actually is both for you on the technical advisory committee and Bob on the SBWMA Board. I forget the exact phrasing of the saying, but there's a saying that I guess the Chinese idiom for opportunity is disaster coupled with something else. And I actually, not to make light of it, I actually hope that some time will be spent by rethink waste and recology to considering whether or not, since they have to rebuild the plant anyway, whether there are ways that could be rebuilt, that it could be rebuilt that would make it a better fit for the way we do trash collection these days and recycling collection. In other words, to try and save money, lower costs, okay? Because they're going to have to rebuild it anyway. Probably not possible because I know they spent a lot of time designing it in the first place to be as efficient as they could, but since you're going to have to redo it anyway, might as well look. First question I had is, I want to make sure I understand how the roughly, what was it, $400,000, what I think of as the tentative historical surplus? How does that roll out through the staff-recommended option of 2% increase to residential and 2% decrease to commercial? Does it get absorbed in there somehow, or how's it work?
Essentially, as Councilman Grocott described, the changes we're recommending, the 2% up on commercial or on residential, the 2% down on commercial, are revenue-neutral overall. So the revenue requirement, the revenue we would generate is not changed. So this 427 really is not affected by that, and I haven't proposed to use any of it for any of the offsetting costs, for example, if we were going to raise rates in one category.
Or for example, I suppose, what that says is that we could also hypothetically look at lowering the commercial rates more than 2% and that, cover that with the $400,000.
It would be, as I've mentioned in the past, I don't view this as any kind of a rate stabilization fund or money that's, I'll call it ours to do all that we want with it. I think we could use it to a degree. That is, you know, I'd want to do the calculation to learn how much that would offset a, say, an additional decrease in the rates. I don't know that number for now, but for the calculations tonight, I have not included any impact to the 427.
Well, I won't make it now. I'll do it when we actually have council discussion, I suppose, asking questions, but I have a... but I have a thought about how we could actually factor it into a somewhat alternative plan that I have, that I'd like to suggest. But in terms of questions, my last question at this point is, the proposal, the recommended option to increase the residential cart rates by 2% pretty much across the board, as I saw from your chart, I presume that that in and of itself does not do anything to try and alleviate the Prop 218 differential between the small carts and the large carts?
That's correct. I took, I took this year off from the previous two years where we had lowered the rates on the two largest cart sizes, and I left the, essentially, I didn't make any proposed changes to those, those cart sizes at this time, anything further. So I decided that my recommended action would be to, let's tackle the commercial versus residential issue, because we did two years' worth on trying to get the residential issue more in line.
Okay. And roughly speaking, and this really is the last question, roughly speaking, within the differentials on the residential carts, if commercial versus residential, it's like 800 or 900,000 bucks a year, between the various residential carts, what are we talking about at this point? Because we did make a couple of years' worth of progress. Is it a few hundred thousand dollars, $50,000? What is it? How close are we?
You know, I don't have that number in particular. As far as making progress, I think what we were able to do was, overall, in the course of the two years, I think we rate, I think we lowered the cost of the 96-gallon cart by $25 per month, and the 64-gallon cart, I think, was by $15 over those two years.
Okay. So it's probably a couple of hundred thousand bucks, given the number of carts, as I recall. Okay. Thank you.
And those are, yeah, those are actually the, probably the two lowest number populist-wise carts.
Thanks, Mark. Bob?
I just wanted to verify that on the 427 schedule, that the real number, the actual number of 328, will not ever go away.
That's correct. That's the only actual number that we know for sure.
Right. In other words, next year, may say 2014 or 15 or whatever the heck it's going to say, but that number's never, that amount is never going away.
That's correct. That's the final one.
It's in our account. We have it. It's a reserve. If the other ones all turn negative, we still have that 328.
That's right. And again, I'll just reiterate that my point is that it's not necessarily a reserve, but yet it does provide some cushion from other surpluses or deficits that may come along.
But that's, that's the only technically real number on the, on the page.
That's correct.
Okay. Thanks.
Thanks, Bob. Ron?
Thanks, Cameron. Just a couple of questions, Jay. Is there a continuing trend toward smaller carts and the residential side?
The cart migration has slowed dramatically in the last year. I think we had, I think it was only, it might have been in the, below 100 in terms of the migration of carts to the smallest size. So we've, we've seen the biggest bulk of those changes, and unless there was something else that came along that provided more of an incentive, I think we've probably got it about where it's going to be.
All right. So you don't anticipate that it's going to pick up depending on how rates are changed? It's, I mean, is rate change a motivation to move to smaller carts?
Only based on the fact that, in my estimation, the amounts here that show per year, the annual increase on the residential side, to me, they don't seem to be significant amounts. So that, to me, is, this is not something that I would see as a significant, oh, my gosh, I've got to get a smaller cart.
Yeah.
So that's my own, my own opinion of this, with a very modest rate increase that we're proposing.
What I was thinking was that by changing rates and stuff, are, do we sort of create a moving target? So we're always having to make adjustments?
I think, I think to a degree we do. As long as we have the inequity between the cost and the rate that's being charged, I think we, we would, I would recommend that we would be continually moving towards where we make those amounts equal or very close to being equal. So as I would look at this, say, a 2% that we're proposing this year, I think in the report, I've indicated that it might take us 10 years to finally close the gap, because it's staying around the range of 20%. So my thought would be that it would be something that we would continue to see, sort of a, if we use a modest amount, we would continue to modify the rates.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ron. Matt, you had an additional question?
Yeah. This might be ahead of the game here, but I remember at one of these presentations, it being said, I think by these guys, or if not them, by you, that part of our cost is the number of cans that people put out. And when, we were talking about this, I remember when we were talking about, you know, the size of your carts that go out. And the comment was made that if people don't have things in those carts or very little, yet they put them out, it adds to our cost of service that is, accumulates throughout the year. So people putting out, for instance, their blue can with their recycles, and there's, you know, it's only a quarter full, and in fact, they could probably put it out once a month as opposed to every week. If people actually exercised that, as a city, our costs would go down, correct?
Not necessarily.
No?
Because the routes wouldn't change significantly. What you'd have is you'd have a, maybe it would be, the recycle truck would go and run its particular route, but, but it would, it would look to dump every blue cart that was there. And you've mentioned that, let's say, some people just didn't put it out one week.
Right.
Well, they still kind of have to run that route to go past that house to get to the next one that has its blue cart out. So I think our costs, generally speaking, wouldn't change as it relates to that, because there would be a defined route that would have potentially a blue cart every week they went to look.
But still, the time to stop, time to load, and then take off and so forth, is there, is there no cost to the time out on the road and so forth?
I think possibly there's, maybe there would be some impact to rate hours that would go along with that, but I think it would be very small. Something that would have a much greater impact if we did it, if we went that way, was to mandate an every-other-week pickup versus an every-week pickup. And that was something which I think they were trying to pilot in San Mateo, and I think it didn't, it didn't take very well. There was lots of confusion.
Okay.
So they basically discontinued the idea, but I think that would be really the only way we would see a significant difference in the cost to provide that.
Gotcha. Oh, yeah. Thank you.
All right. Thanks, Matt. Any additional questions for Jay? Okay. Thank you, Jay. Now is the time for public comment. I have one speaker card, Mr. Bill Barons. Thank you for your patience. Good evening.
It's been interesting. Mayor and council, my name is Bill Barons. I live at 793 Elm Street. Over the weekend, I exchanged some emails with Councilman Olbert and learned some things about Proposition 218. So I now understand the language and the resolution that you're considering adopting tonight and why it has to set forth the proposed rate change that you're considering. That's the correct procedure under Proposition 218, but if you will, I think that puts anybody that considers another rate adjustment more appropriate in the whole. The council has made a decision, expressed it in the resolution, and then holds a public hearing, and individuals coming are really coming to ask you to change your mind. That's not the usual role of a public hearing, which I think is to provide information to the council before a decision is made. I've been in that position the last two years. I've come to your hearings and I've spoken. It's not a comfortable feeling to, to try and figure out, what can I say that will make the council change a decision that they've already reached? I'd like to suggest, and really to urge, that you step back and seek public input on all five of the options that the staff report has set forth. Before you undertake your required Proposition 218 hearing, call it a pre-Prop 218 hearing, if you will. I think that you would benefit then by learning what your constituents think about each of the options and would be able to make a better and more informed decision when you adopt the resolution calling the Prop 218 hearing. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right. Is there anyone else wishing to speak on public comment on this item? Hearing none. I will perhaps entertain a motion or a comment?
I have another question.
Okay.
It was raised by Bill's presentation. Thank you. In the past, we've talked about increasing rates. Like, I remember one year, we decided to, it might have been last year, I can't remember, but we do this every year. We went with sort of the shock treatment, which was to go with perhaps a higher rate in the card that goes out on the Prop 218 hearing that was higher than we figured we might take action on. And I think we actually did take an action that was lower than what we had put in the notice. And that was by design to sort of shake people up and say, hey, we're going to raise your rates 10%. And then people showed up and wrote letters and so forth. Not a lot, but we still got some. And then we ended up taking an action that was less. So that's, that's on the proposal to go higher. What about on the proposal, as we're talking about tonight, to go lower? If we, can you explain that? Because, you know, what we noticed in this little postcard that goes out, where does that put us?
So I'll, I'll start, and if I'm not adequate in my explanation, I'll ask Greg to chime in, our city attorney. But essentially, what the Proposition 218 notice requires is that the council notice the public, the rate pairs, of the maximum increase that would, would be considered for the solid waste rates. That, that being said, if you use 10% as your example, if you provided that notice out to all the rate pairs, then essentially, the council's action on that Prop 218 public hearing night couldn't be to increase the rates any more than the 10%. They could choose to increase them by lesser amounts. In fact, in this notice that we would put out, the key point would be that we would be increasing the residential rates by 2% and the unscheduled services by, you know, 0.5%. But the fact that we would, we'd be decreasing the commercial rates, we would show those commercial rates as equal to last year's, because unless the council decided at the meeting, no, you know what? We don't want to lower those rates. We want to still be able to charge that particular rate. So the key for Prop 218 hearing notice and all that is that you're showing them the maximum rates that you would, you would consider charging for 2017.
Very good. Thank you.
Thanks, Matt. Would anyone care to make a motion or additional questions? Yes? Go right ahead, Ron.
One additional question, just following up on Matt's point. So option five is the, if we approve this as is with option five, that is the maximum that we would be charging? Is that right? Potentially? All the others are reductions?
The, sorry. So it would be a 0.5% increase in unscheduled services?
Right.
Which is that separate category of things?
Correct.
Be a 2% increase on all cart sizes on the residential side, and then it would be a 2% decrease on the, on all cart and bin sizes on the commercial side.
All right. So that's the notice that goes out?
That's what would be in the notice.
Then, when we have the hearing, we could choose one of the other options?
You couldn't choose one of the other options if it, if it was going to increase the solid waste rates by more than the 2% that's in the notice.
But we could choose another option that increased the rates less or decreased them?
For instance, leave them the same.
Or we could come up with option six, which was something else, which was less than-
As long as it was less than what was noticed.
Long as it was less. Okay.
That's correct.
Right. Exactly. I understand. All right. Which in that case would give the public an opportunity to weigh in. In other words, if at that meeting, we heard enough comment that we decided that we were going to do something different that was not more, we'd have that opportunity.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ron.
So I, I would just like to go ahead and make a motion. I don't know if it needs to mention about the commercial customers, because you said the notice doesn't need to. So I would just like to make a motion that we send out notices pursuant to Proposition 218, indicating that we would make a maximum 2% increase for residential customers and a maximum 0.51 increase for all unscheduled services.
And, Mr. Mayor, if I may, that is, there is actually a resolution for you to, to consider-
I know there is.
Same thing. So I was just going to make that point.
I know there is. I gave my resolution. I left out the commercial on purpose.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. I have a motion.
I'm confused. Of course, I'm always confused. So, Mr. City Attorney, what, he left out the, the commercial part of it? So what does that mean? Does it mean anything?
We set-
So we have, it's basically setting, consider solid waste collection rates. It doesn't give any numbers. It doesn't give any numbers in the resolution.
Jay is, correct me if I'm wrong, but this, these rates, are they set by ordinance or are they set by?
These are set by resolution.
By resolution. Okay. Because we set the other rates by ordinance for-
That's correct.
For sanitary sewer. So since we do it by resolution, we have more flexibility. So you, you, the ultimate rates is going to have to be set in your resolution, but for purposes of noticing the Prop 218, that process is what enables you to increase the rates, but you always have the flexibility to decrease them from what they currently are.
Understand all of that, should, doesn't it have to say residential and commercial in the resolution? Otherwise, commercial is left out of the-
Not-
I'm just asking.
No. For tonight's purpose, you're just noticing the public hearing.
Okay.
So in the final resolution that you're going to approve it, it will have, it will have to have the rates.
Final. But final. We don't have to put the word "commercial solid rate."
We don't tonight, because we're not proposing any increase.
Yeah. I understand. It's fine. It's a good question.
Still looking for a second.
Oh, a second.
All right. I have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Mark?
Thank you. I'm going to vote against this resolution, and the reason I'm going to vote against the resolution is because of the issue related to what Bob was just going through with the city attorney and with Jay. I actually would, would be fine voting for this if it mentioned our, I guess I will call it intentions, about commercial rates, whatever those might be. And the reason I say that is because, you know, look, I would love to provide trash service for free to everybody, and that's not possible. What I really worry about is situations where, you know, there's almost a million dollars a year that commercial accounts are paying more than costs into the city under the current approach. We have been sued in the past by, in this, in the sewer area, by hotel operators who felt that they were being disproportionately charged, you know, above and beyond the cost of their service. There's a risk here, and it's a risk that keeps growing. And we can dance around it as much as we like, but we have to do something about it. And I realize that what we actually do is going to be set in November, but I'm just not happy with, with dancing around it that way.
Mark, if I might ask, I mean, so are you saying that you're in favor of the staff recommendation, but not the resolution as it was, or the motion as it was phrased?
Correct.
You could, I might suggest that you offer a substitute amendment and see if anyone wants to take you up on the offer.
I tell you what, I'll, I'll do that in, in a second. The, I also had, well, I have an alternative idea that I want to mention, which is that when we come back to talk about this in November, we consider using the general fund surplus in part to help drive down the commercial rates faster and have a, basically, basically borrow money, take a loan out of the general fund, repaid out of, to be repaid out of rates on residential increases in the future, and basically try and mitigate the risk that we're faced with. But for now, I guess, per the mayor's suggestion, I guess I can do this with, I moved to adopt Resolution 2016, a resolution, a dash-
93.
93. A resolution of the City Council of the City of San Carlos, holding, setting a public hearing on November 28, 2016, to consider 2017 residential commercial solid waste collection services rates pursuant to Proposition 218. Option five? Is that what I'm supposed to say? Option five.
I will second.
All right. So we have a substitute motion offered by Mr. Olbert and a second. Any discussion? If not, we'll call the roll on Mark's substitute amendment.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Grisilli?
Yes.